Welcome back.
Don't be bad.
There's cyberspace somewhere they might have just disintegrated, you never know.
I like that.
Alrighty, I would like to call to order the meeting of the Lacey Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, February twenty first. I would also say that we have a quorum and I'm looking for a motion for approval of the agenda and consent items.
Some of second.
All those in favor?
I'm fine.
Opposed? Alrighty, public, we're open for public comment. Ryan, is there a whole list of people?
Please go ahead and pull the participants list. I don't see anybody in the audience. There's nobody here at City Hall outside of staff and the planning commission. But if on the odd chance there is somebody in the attendees that wants to address the planning commission, this is your opportunity to do that. Go ahead and use the raise hand function of the webinar where we can go ahead and bring you in. Going once, going twice. No public comment.
Okay, commission members reports. Let's start with the best.
No report.
Really good article I was gonna mention and it keeps my mind completely, so I won't mention it then.
They do always email.
Yeah.
Not a report but an observation. I was just wondering, I don't get out as much as I used to, but driving along I five by Slater Kenny. Is that our responsibility as a city for the cleanup there or is that the DOT?
It's DOT. It's DOT right away, located in the city of Olympia. So that's, you know, we're essentially, you know, in discussions with both Wash Dot and City of Olympia and others to hopefully get that cleaned up sometime here in the near future. They're aware of it, but it's outside of our direct control.
But by the way, last week, they did clean up the hillside.
The garbage.
The garbage, yeah. So, but it's all back now.
Right. And, and I am under the, from what I understand from the police department is that the numbers are increasing there in terms of the number of homeless. Because with the, the Days Inn and other housing projects that are coming online, the, the first ones that will be able to occupy those facilities are those that are in the right away. So in the, in the freeway right away. So that's, I guess, in a roundabout way, kind of encouraging certain folks to locate in the right way. Because then they could possibly be the first to get housing.
How, how far up are we from that?
The Days Inn is probably the, the one to come online first. It will be several months at this point. So, status of the Days Inn, the property has been formally transferred. It was, you know, sold as a hotel. The Low Income Housing Institute based out of Seattle is now the, the formal owner of the, of the property. They've come in and assessed or kind of done an assessment of the building and the people that are in there. There's twenty separate rooms. This, and this information is a couple of weeks old, twenty separate rooms that were occupied, thirty individuals. And I think four were families. And so they were, their first step was to find suitable housing for them somewhere else. Because they were removing everybody from the building so that they can do remediation associated with the contamination that's in the building from drug manufacturing. When we spoke to Lehigh, you know, they, this is the, the second facility that they've done similar to this. They did a facility in Tacoma on Hosmer Street. They did mention that the contamination here was much worse than their Hosmer facility. And so their amount of remediation was gonna be far higher than the, the amount in Tacoma there. And they just didn't have a good estimate of how long that would take. And so our best estimate at this point is probably gonna be May, you know, give or take because of the, the issues associated with the building. So.
Thank you. No report from me, Gail?
I watched the city council meeting. They had a nice sort of salute to Black History Month, which was interesting. Unfortunately, they didn't have a black woman as well as all the black men were there, but I give them points for having it. Then there was a long sort of harangue discussion about the joint planning. And help me, it wasn't the policies, it was the.
So I think you're talking about the Regional Housing Council.
Yes, Regional Housing Council.
The agreement between all the different jurisdictions for the.
Yeah, and Olympia has signed on and, and Tom Water has signed on and Lacey was the last one to sign on. And there was some disagreement from, from at least one council person that they should move forward with it. But in fact, they did move forward. And this is the first step in getting that done. As I understand it, that, that sort of nitty gritty of it will come back again to the council at some point for, for voting on.
No, I think that's maybe that was where one of the council members was getting a little kind of confused on things. So the, the Regional Housing Council amendment, kind of one of the, the major sticking points was it recommended a couple of bodies for providing funding recommendations to the Regional Housing Council. One related to affordable housing projects and another related to homeless services. And the makeup of these groups is overseen by the Regional Housing Council through establishment of a charter. And so one of the council members was really concerned that because this charter wasn't done, that he didn't want to buy into it. Because he didn't feel like the jurisdictional representation was fair.
Sufficient.
Yeah, and understanding that the charter has to be approved by the Regional Housing Council, not by the Lacey City Council or any other, you know, the Board of County Commissioners or any other.
So anyway, after all that discussion and sort of yelling back and forth, not yelling, yeah, yelling, they, they approved it. So it's moved on.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, that was, that was an interesting night of me standing at the podium for forty minutes while they hashed that out. But I'm glad that it was successful and, you know, we're, right now, we're actually working with our staff colleagues from the other jurisdictions to go through that, that charter. To make sure that, you know, the jurisdictional representation is fair and that we do have, you know, Lacey representation on that. And, and that's been made clear at the Regional Housing Council level. So, you know, we're continuing to make sure that those, you know, the feelings of, of those certain council members are being represented through the RHC process.
Everybody left without bruises.
Yeah.
No, I've just been watching a resurgence of interest in the ADUs in the newspaper and in the, and.
That's what I was gonna mention.
And it, it seems like there's a, a lot of excitement over the fact that Lacey is willing to connect sewer and water for building, you know, an ADU. But if we're, you know, looking at these, these really large lots, I know that, you know, having a third of an acre without having that floodplain necessary for the septic tanks anymore. It seems like, you know, putting something in that space would be a much better use of, of that land, you know? And having those, those connections, the sewer and the water is, you know, absolutely amazing to, to have for that use of, of space.
That's actually what I wanted to comment on. I was fascinated by the incentives that the city is offering to make this possible. And there was an interview with this gentleman who started his own business after a lot of experience and was able to do this at an affordable price. And kind of socialize it and normalize it that we can do this on lots that were, homes were built on prior to the nineties. When in the nineties, all the lot size shrunk. But I found it really worthwhile that we're making a tangible effort to support that with easing the way, with permitting and funding. So I was very encouraged by that.
Yeah, that's, sorry, didn't mean to take your, your time here, but, you know, but what I like to say is like, Lacey does everything short of swinging a hammer for an ADU. In fact, we go even farther than that. We've, you know, we've, you know, reached out to, to lenders, people, you know, in the community doing, you know, lending. Point to Oley Fed and some other small banks and, and credit unions that are really on board with this program as well. So not only have we done everything from, you know, getting pre-approved plans that are, are counter, you know, waiving sewer and water connection fees and, and, you know, doing all those other good things. We've even worked with the private sector, you know, we've done the work with the lenders, met with the builders, the Olympia Master Builders and others to not only vet our pre-approved plans, but also get them, you know, excited about the program as well. So hopefully, I mean, we, we keep thinking, okay, this is the time, people are gonna take us up, you know, housing prices are high, you know, those kinds of things. We're, we're hopeful that, you know, going into this next year, more people will take advantage of this.
And didn't the state, the state legislation about increasing density got out of committee too, I think?
Yes, yeah, it did.
No report. Alrighty. Department report?
Yeah, so I've got a couple of things. And one of them actually is more of kind of a question for you all related to the joint meeting. So I'll start with this and then we'll turn over to you for any discussion you have coming on the joint meeting. So we do have two positions that were posted. You might remember coming out of this year's budget. We do have a housing coordinator position and a climate sustainability coordinator position that were in this year's budget, that were just advertised closing and we'll be doing interviews the third week in March. So we're excited to kind of get some additional help with housing and homelessness issues and climate issues as well. Cause we've kind of all been sharing the load on all those things for forever. So it'll be good to get some, some help on the way. And so those will be people that will work in our, our office under me. So I'm, I'm excited about that as well.
Actually, it seems like the job market for employers is starting to come around a little bit. More candidates with the qualifications and the skills necessary. Are you guys seeing that? Or is it still?
I don't hire too many people. Our last positions were a couple of our permit technicians were at the end of last year and we had a really good candidate pool for that. I know that there are still some jobs that are, have been posted for a while on the city that, you know, I don't think we've been as successful on. So I think it maybe depends a little bit on the position, but maybe it's starting to trend the right direction just a little bit.
I will find out that I think it was like two or three days after we posted them, the sustainability coordinator, we already had three applicants. So we're feeling pretty good about being able to, to fill both positions.
Other question, it might be premature, but when you describe this, or the labels are housing and climate. I'm the tree person, you know, so just curious, the tree people were talking about enforcement of, of the, no, cutting the trees down and the canopy thing. So is the climate person gonna be involved with that at all or is that strictly the arborist area?
No, the climate person will be involved, not so much in like the, I'll say the site specific, like going out, like the arborist wood and identifying specific trees to be retained and those kinds of things. What they will be doing is the implementation of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, which talks about, you know, our overall, you know, greenhouse gas emissions targets. And as a part of that, you know, what we've done is a canopy assessment of our overall urban canopy. And one of the things we'll be doing probably in the next year or two, moving forward through updates to our environmental element, is looking at our overall urban canopy and doing another assessment of that. So it's a little bit higher level, you know, that, that kind of, they'll be doing some specific implementation, but really looking at like our goals and policies related to climate change and updating our, our climate plans and those kinds of things. So.
Thank you.
After the homeless committee came forward with their recommendations, I believe one of their recommendations was to create a position. I don't think that's been filled. Will the housing individual be involved with finding housing for homeless people?
Not directly.
But Shannon, this is a great opportunity.
Go ahead.
Well, I'll let you go and I'll add on some additional comments.
So not, not specifically, this is somebody that will be going out and doing, you know, site visits with our CRE team, our MOT, what is it, MOT? Those kinds of, through the police department, they'll be interfacing with, with them that way. But they're not gonna be somebody that's necessarily providing housing for people. We, we have a coordinated entry process through Thurston County that that'll still continue through.
But this position will be, you know, liaison with the rest of the organizations throughout Thurston County. So they'll certainly be involved in those conversations and a resource, you know, with our MOT team, like Ryan mentioned, and other staff for guiding people to the resources to directly access housing through our coordinated entry system. In addition to that, there's one other position that will interface a lot with that position. And it's going to be a social services or human services coordinator. And they're gonna be tasked with taking a look at, you know, funding some of the social service programs that the city currently funds. For example, community development block grant funding is one really good example. In addition to that, the city of Lacey has done a really good job of getting funding out to other nonprofits and organizations to provide social services. So overseeing those types of programs as well.
By the way, Shannon Kelly Fong, our assistant city manager.
She knew right out.
Alright, okay. So the other thing that I just wanted to kind of throw out there for the good of the order was any takeaways that you might have from the joint meeting. Where the last, the last time the planning commission met was the joint meeting with the council. And obviously, we spent a lot of time there going over neighborhood commercial and joint planning and, you know, next year's work, well, next year and beyond's work program. So any, this would be kind of your opportunity, if you had any kind of feedback, takeaways, questions from the joint meeting, this would be a kind of opportunity to be able to do that.
The mayor introduced a couple of topics that I thought were kind of, were not on the agenda and wondered what was gonna be happening from those. So they were, I think, a little separate or, you know, maybe tangential, I guess. But so I think that created some questions for me as far as what those might directionally cause for us or might affect our work for 2023 and such.
So remind me, the one was taking over permitting for the entire urban growth area. Was it, what was the other one?
That was the big one.
If you can think of it, let me know. But, you know, the, I think it, what it has done is it maybe has set some of the wheels of motions for some very preliminary discussions to occur between city leadership and leadership at Thurston County on what something like that might look like. The way I, I kind of, my analogy for the, for this permitting issue, it's kind of like an iceberg, right? So you see only what's above the surface. You don't see the two thirds of it or whatever lies below the surface. That's really the details that are really the important part that can sink the ship. And so, you know, while I think on the surface it, it sounds really great to have the city do, you know, the permitting. There's a lot of details that need to be worked out and how, you know, revenues would be shared and whether or not we have enough people to do the work and whether or not we even have enough space in City Hall to accommodate those people. I mean, you just like, you know, just create this kind of litany of what if kind of thing. So I think it, all that to say is there is a lot to be worked out when it comes to having the city take over any permitting responsibility in the urban growth area.
So I was just a seed that he kind of dropped on this.
Yeah, I guess so. Seed slash like pet project slash.
And the initial discussions Rick has reached out to the county administrator and they've already spoken at that very tentative high level. So that'll be the stepping point for what I'm sure will be a lot of discussion between staff on those details that Ryan. So I wouldn't expect the planning commission to really see anything from this, you know, in the near term. It's, it's gonna be more of a, really the staff working things out as we, as we work through it. Is that fair, Ryan?
Well, I think just the tip that we see makes a lot of sense. And I know Thurston County, I don't know how it's impacting us as, as a community. Cause I, I just don't, I'm not into that part of it. But it seems to me like there's, there's potential there. We're one of the only two of the three jurisdictions that are here, Lacey, that has the kind of area. And, and Thurston County has, to be honest with you, it has a problem getting to the, to the work.
So they must be. Don't we have to get through the whole joint planning thing first and like have an agreement on what we're, we're permit? I mean, that felt like that was the.
That is, yeah. That's a good, good argument to say, hey, we shouldn't even have these conversations until we have everything consistent, right? Because right now we're operating under a two thousand and three comprehensive plan with two thousand and three, give or take, regulations. So our, our comprehensive plans and our development regulations are very inconsistent at this point. And so in order to, so like, for example, if we as staff were to review a project right now in the urban growth area, we'd have to review it against old regulations that are not our current city regulations. So in order to even get there, we would have to make sure that these things are consistent. And at this point, the joint plan will take us through this year plus at least next year to get through the update of the regulations. So we're at least almost two full years away from having any level of consistency. Plus, we are now working on our 2025 update. So they'll just get things updated to 2016 and we'll turn around and adopt our 2025 comp plan. So.
Sort of bottleneck, seems to me.
And it's not any fault of the cities.
No, yeah.
You know, the city has done all the, the work that we have been required to do and, you know, it's, it's not our position to have to frankly bail out another jurisdiction. So, you know, that they'll need to do some of that advanced work if, if we're even to get to the point of being able to share permitting responsibilities.
I think it's important that it remain some form of a long range goal because it's, you know, as, as they discussed, it's really not particularly in the county's interest to move that forward. It's in the city's interest eventually to move that forward. So I think it has to remain, you know, not, we're not doing this Thursday, but, you know, down the road, this is where we want to get to.
But it's a little bit with the, you know, with the urban growth areas, it behooves the city to keep the pressure on the county to keep this moving forward. So I think, you know, if it's, if, you know, we're, you know, through city council or county commissioners or mayors or whatever, trying to push this agenda a little harder. Because I think they've been able to sit back and just wait and not be responsive. But I do believe it's in the city's best interest that the urban growth areas are, are, are done properly to, to blend in with the city and, and, and will, the city will benefit from that. But so I, I think we need to keep our foot on the gas with it and not let them dictate the pace. Because clearly they, it's a slow pace if we do that.
Is this why Olympia and Tom Water grabbed all their?
No, I don't think so. Not, not specifically. You know, it, it does help, you know, bring everything under your own jurisdictional control for consistency purposes and stuff like that. But I, I don't think it was like the deciding factor. You know, I think, you know, Tom Waters was, they did a, a large annexation a couple of years ago that brought in, you know, basically already developed property. So that, you know, that brought in a, a lot of land. Olympia never has had a very large urban growth area even to begin with. And basically, there's kind of two areas of town. If you're familiar with Olympia, it's, it's kind of like South Boulevard Road off Yum Highway by Ridge Road. That's, and they're actually looking at annexing that area right now. They're doing annexation studies to bring that into Olympia. And then the other is kind of South Bay area. So on the north side of downtown, there's a small urban growth area there. But that has a lot of critical areas and isn't very developable. So they're looking at that kind of south, you know, south Olympia area to, to annex it. So there, there's all kinds of different reasons to annex, but usually permitting isn't too high on that, that list. Grant, did you have something to add?
No, just that, that, that's really the long-term discussion and it's already in the council's work priorities is to, to work on, you know, being systematic about annexing and getting to that point where it's actually a city and we don't have to have these weird discussions about, you know, who's permitting under what jurisdiction and what development regulations. So that, that's, that's their, their main goal. My impression of the discussion was the permitting thing is a stopgap or, you know, kind of a, a step towards that.
So basically it was just dropped into that meeting, that joint meeting for no purpose for us, for these few years.
Not really.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, permitting has nothing to do necessarily with the comprehensive planning part of it. It's about, more about the, you know, day-to-day work that we.
Hey, and I can relax.
So Ryan, you, you know what I'm gonna say next, right? Everything's related to everything, so.
Well, does this have any, I mean, just, this is another tangent, but there's commissioners through some county, but they're gonna expand the number, is that?
It doesn't necessarily equate to anything I don't think we're talking about here. Right, right. It'll just mean that we'll have more, it'll be closer to a county council than it will a commission. And I, I think it has more to do with, like, right now, for example, and this is, this is a tangent, but is more about like, if we have two commissioners talking to each other, it's a meeting. It's an open public meeting because they have a quorum. Two out of the three commissioners talking to each other is a quorum. Versus if there was two commissioners talking to each other in a five-person board, they're not, it's not considered a quorum. So they can, it improves their operation. It, it gets the commissioners a little bit out of the day-to-day operation of the county and more into a kind of like, you know, policies and procedures of the county versus the actual day-to-day management of the county. Yes.
And maybe always be two to one, two to one, two to one, two to one.
Yeah.
If you're the one, it's gonna feel really mad after a while. Okay, anything else?
Nothing on the department report, no.
Okay, does Grant have anything he wants to add?
Nope, time good.
Okay, well, I gave you a chance.
I appreciate it.
I was gonna ask about city manager, is that still ongoing as far as they, they hired a group, right?
Grant, do you wanna, do you have a little bit of information there?
I'll defer to Shannon. She's closer to the process than I am.
I can certainly provide a general overview. Yes, so the city does have a consulting firm to go for the recruitment for the city manager position. The first review actually of applications was supposed to have occurred this weekend. So we are hoping to hear from an update from the consultants here shortly on the number of applicants and how many are moving forward in the process.
Why is that process outsourced with the?
It's a great question. And a lot of positions in like city management or county management at that point is, and part of it is hitting kind of the voice and getting more reach as far as candidates and candidate pools.
So they can solicit, you know, use the resources they have to, you know, stretch further for inquiries or.
It's called a headhunter.
Yes, yeah, that's it. Yes. And, you know, they do.
Are they essentially just like headhunter recruiters? Is that kind of what they are or?
Exactly what they do, but they specialize in.
Analysis versus finding.
They specialize in public positions.
Correct, and especially executive positions. So, this is what they, they do day in and day out is look for candidates for executive management.
Gotcha. Okay, now I get it.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to new business. Advisory board stipend program discussion by Shannon Kelly Fong.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Kelly Fong. It's nice to be here with you all. And I gotta say, it's really nice to have heard the discussion that goes on here. It was really fun to kind of be a fly on the wall and get to listen into all of that. Makes me think about some of the, the boards that I currently am the liaison for. So Brian is gonna applaud you and all of your efforts that you do here. So and also all of you and all of your efforts that you do here. So I am here tonight to talk about a potential program that the city is looking into and get some general feedback from you all on kind of what your, your thoughts are on this program. And then hopefully be able to take this back to another advisory board, which is the Commission on Equity. And we're going out to the Historical Commission as well as the Parks Board as well for some additional feedback on this program. So just really quickly, we're here tonight just to have an initial discussion. There's going to be a recommendation at the end, but it's more for just discussion and not something that really looking to take action on, but to get your feedback on. When we're evaluating these programs, because there are, as you've probably seen in the staff report, several options that might be available to the city. Um, when we're evaluating these programs, uh, because there are, uh, as you've probably seen in the staff report, several options that might be available to the city, it's got a pretty wide um, fiscal impact. And so we think adopting a potential uh, advisory stipend program, which I will unpack here in just a second, would likely have an impact of around fifteen thousand to forty thousand dollars depending on which option the city moved forward with. If the city was to move forward with a program like this. How this came up, um, the conversation is part of the twenty twenty three Commission on Equity Work Plan. Um, and the work plan is to research and review potential compensation opportunities for advisory body members and create a recommendation for the Lacey City Council by the end of quarter one. Um, and the Commission on Equity reviewed this for its initial review in January at its January twenty fifth meeting. And part of um, what they asked me to do was to go out to the other advisory boards and get some feedback on the potential program, which is why I'm here uh, with you all tonight. And please, if you all have questions, um, don't hesitate just to, to jump in and um, certainly would like to answer them.
Could, could you just answer who, what is the Commission on Equity? I, I'm sorry, am I the only one that doesn't know what that is?
Well, it's a great question.
Just like, you referenced it a couple of times and I saw it here on the, the information, so I just didn't know who and what they were.
Absolutely, so it is um, the newest uh, advisory body that the Lacey City Council created back in January of twenty twenty one. And they have been meeting um, since June twenty twenty one. And they are tasked with the Lacey City Council uh, to look into ways to make Lacey a more welcoming community as well as uh, to see if there are any barriers to participation in government as well as to continue critical conversations on race and equity.
Okay.
Okay, and um, just for a little bit more information, um, the commission has seven members. And uh, two members can be from the urban growth area. Uh, it also has a Lacey Youth Council representative as well, so uh, we have four advisory boards that have Lacey Youth Council representatives. And uh, the Commission on Equity is, is one of them. Uh, they meet on the fourth Monday of the month, um, and their meetings are at five thirty here at City Hall as well as online. And they always have a public comment period. So just as a snapshot for uh, you know, advisory boards here at the city, we currently have nine advisory boards um, that deal uh, specifically with city uh, elements. But we also have eleven, not eleven, we have uh, additional two advisory uh, bodies that are regional in part. And so collectively, we have about eleven uh, uh, advisory bodies. We also have ad hoc advisory bodies at time. Um, so the commission has an issue that they wanna do a deeper dive into, so they'll go out and get community members to be part of this and to make recommendations on, you know, very specific areas. So some examples I provided here include um, the work group that was set up to take a look at uh, homeless responses here in the city as well as another uh, task force that was set up specifically for uh, the park comprehensive plan update. So these are set up for very specific uh, purposes, there's still volunteers that are provising, providing comments and inputs and then eventually recommendations to the Lacey City Council. If you wanna learn more about all of the advisory boards, including uh, the Commission on Equity as an example, uh, we do have the City Council Policies and Procedure Manual, section two uh, fourteen, which goes into more detail about the makeup of those types of bodies and what they are tasked with doing here for the city. Um, so this was all in, included in the staff report, so I apologize for this being particularly small. And now I recognize if I had been at the podium, I would never have been able to see any of these numbers. But what I wanted to do was just provide a really uh, high level overview of uh, the advisory bodies, including what their memberships include. So how many members they have, what they generally uh, meet uh, per uh, year or a month. And as you can see, there is a pretty wide variety, some meet annually, some meet as necessary. Um, some advisory groups like yourselves meet twice a month. Um, so you can see the third, fourth column, uh, so the second one over from the right, the total meetings anticipated is based off of um, what you all typically do, although we know that that's not always the case on a year to year basis. So the final column to the right is the total meetings uh, per advisory group in twenty twenty two. And I just wanna note that this also includes joint meetings. Uh, the subsequent tables we're gonna take a look at don't include joint meetings, so I just wanna highlight that. So I've highlighted uh, the Planning Commission, as you can see, um, you all met eighteen times last year, including joint meetings. Um, you know, depending on the work plan as well as the purview timeline and advisory, advisory boards can really meet um, quite a variety of time. I wanna highlight some of the regional boards just really quickly. So one regional board that the city has uh, advisory uh, board members on is the Capital Area Regional Public Facilities District Board as well as the Joint Animal Service Commission Board. So those are uh, the two additional boards in addition to the nine advisory bodies that the city of Lacey has.
What about Library Board, it's a Timberland Library System. So is that just membership on the larger?
So that's, that's a great uh, question, Commissioners, there's actually a couple of boards associated with uh, Timberland Library. So they have um, you know, their, their, their Board of Regents, right, which is their um, uh, policy body. Um, the Library Board specifically here is for our Lacey Timberland Library. So they are to make recommendations for facility improvements at the Timberland Library. And so that is um, city of Lacey appointed uh, advisory body members. Okay, thank you. So uh, what we were able to do, um, and this is one of the, I guess, um, silver linings of the pandemic as everything moves to having kind of hybrid or online um, access. We were able to take a look at all of the meetings and have pretty accurate timing for the number of meetings, the time of meetings, um, et cetera. So I just wanted to provide kind of a high level overview of advisory bodies and how uh, many times they met and for what the dur- duration was in twenty twenty two. So figure one here is showing the actual number of advisory board meetings, the total number. Um, you'll note, notice that this does not include uh, joint meetings unlike the previous uh, table did. As you can see, Planning Commission, you all met the most uh, number of times um, last year. Um, this does not include uh, Lacey Youth Council, which Lacey Youth Council also meets uh, twice a month. But we don't um, record or uh, have a, a public hybrid option available for Lacey Youth Council meetings. So it's a little bit different. Um, you can see the Commission on Equity, uh, the newest board, like we just uh, talked about, also met um, you know, the second highest number of times with fourteen meetings. Again, this doesn't include your joint meetings though with the Lacey City Council as an example. So we're also able to take a look at uh, the number of hours you all spent at public meetings. And the one thing I do wanna make a note of is this is just the meeting times. So this doesn't take into account all of the hours you all spend reading staff reports, um, reviewing potential code changes, um, thinking about ideas or what additional research you're doing on your end. So this is just how much time you all are here. Um, so you can see the total hours expended per advisory board really um, fluctuates depending on the board itself and um, the Commission on Equity as, as an example, met close to thirty three hours last year. Uh, you all met just over twenty one hours. Um, and you can see that uh, the CAR PFD Board, which was that regional body that I mentioned earlier, that meets once a year or as needed, um, it was less than an hour for their meeting time. So there is a diversity of uh, time that advisory board members spend on their various advisory boards. Uh, the last uh, figure here just shows the average hours per advisory board meeting. Um, so you can see uh, Commission on Equity meetings have uh, lasted on average about two point three hours. Um, Planning Commission meetings last about one point two hours. So I am looking at the clock here, and so if you all get the rest of your items done here in twenty five minutes, we might be able to make that threshold. But this is just an average, so some meetings are gonna go longer, some meetings are, you know, gonna, gonna be shorter.
It doesn't feel like we've got it done on average.
Numbers from when we were zooming, I assume on the-
Oh, maybe so.
So those were shorter meetings.
Yeah, maybe so.
Yeah, twenty twenty two did have, you know, just some remote and then also kind of coming back into a person. And that's a, that's a great point, Commissioner, of we didn't take a look at, you know, what meetings, the durations were for just purely remote meetings versus hybrid meetings.
Well, and, and we've gotten shorter to schedule, that, I, I assumed that was a s- uh, city staff issue because I know you guys were.
Yeah.
But are we, is that a permanent change? Are we ever gonna have two hour meetings again, or are we always gonna be in the one hour?
Well, it's up to you all.
We get into this.
That's kinda what I was thinking, we have a lot of stuff in the next, you know.
Yeah, I, I think there, there's been a couple of things, um, number one was the hybrid that was, or the remote meetings that were shorter. Um, two, we knew last year was also a year that we really had to focus on implementation of, of stuff rather than bringing a lot of new stuff to you. So I'll, I'll say that I think the Planning Commission uh, in the past has averaged for in-person meetings, I'll say twenty nineteen and before typically two hours.
Yeah.
Has always kind of been the, the set, you know, hour.
And share it too.
And, and so, you know, like the, like you just highlighted, this is really dependent on the work plan also, that's coming before a board. And, you know, for example, with the Commission on Equity, that is a very new advisory board as well, so there-
Forming stuff going on.
There is, right, so that five stages of development, there's a lot of things going on in addition to the work plan as well. Uh, but we don't have really good kind of pre um, twenty twenty one data, uh, uh, we can take minutes and we could certainly try to calculate, you know, that would take a lot of kind of work on the backend. But we can now track this moving forward, so to your point about, hey, this year seemed kind of light for Planning Commission, we'll be able to evaluate that in the future, um, you know, with all of the advisory boards moving forward as we continue using this hybrid model.
Good.
So um, some background on what a stipend program is and um, you know, I've gotten this far in the presentation and I haven't really explained that, so I think uh, let's, let's get into what that is. So the idea is that um, you know, removing barriers to participation to government and taking a look at what could be something that would prohibit somebody from wanting to be a part of advisory board, um, like the Planning Commission. Um, so a lot of local governments are taking a look at stipend programs, there are several examples and I'll show a few examples here in just a second of um, entities that have adopted these types of programs. Uh, but the idea really is to try to rem- remove a barrier and to increase participation and representation across advisory uh, boards. Um, and stipend programs, the idea is to offset potential costs incurred by participating, including, although I will say this is uh, there could be many more things that could be put on this list, but including, you know, financial impact of attending meetings. You know, somebody who has to make a decision of, you know, whether they need to pick up an extra hour or two or three, depending on how long your uh, Planning Commission meetings are gonna be going in the future, um, or, or, you know, coming to a Planning Commission. Um, expenses for things like childcare, um, transportation to and from meetings, and then also internet access. So as we've talked about with, you know, kind of the remote meetings and now the hybrid meetings, also being able to participate, you know, online um, and other direct financial impacts uh, that might not be noted on this list. The other thing um, that uh, jurisdictions are taking a look at with these types of programs is if they also reduce the long term burnout of existing members by having other members who are interested in being parts of these boards. People feel, you know, less compelled to be, well, I'll continue to be on this advisory board for another, you know, term or another term or another term. Maybe I can take a term off and come back and be um, you know, a participant on advisory board in a few years. So looking at these types of programs, um, there are a couple of considerations that the city is doing some diligence on. Um, and the first one is how much the stipend amount should be. Um, and one thing that we are researching a little bit more is the Volunteer Protection Act. This is a federal act um, that was adopted in nineteen ninety seven, still applicable today, has not changed since then. Um, but essentially, the VPA, the Volunteer Protection Act protects volunteers from personal liability. Um, and there are certain requirements as part of this. Um, but the volunteers uh, cannot receive anything of value in lieu of compensation in excess of five hundred dollars. So you are protected um, with the VPA if you receive less than five hundred dollars. If you go over that threshold, the VPA personal liability protections uh, no longer exist. And again, there are other criteria as part of the VPA that are also in consideration.
Is that in a calendar year?
Correct, yep, correct. Um, and then as far as the stipends amount, uh, doing a research on these programs, what we found is there's no really standard program. Every jurisdiction does it a little bit differently. And so talking about what awards uh, could be for, you know, potential stipend program, uh, some jurisdictions provide a stipend award to all uh, members, the same amount. Um, other jurisdictions have a tiered uh, system. So for example, if an individual um, has financial hardships, they uh, qualify for a higher tier um, than other uh, advisory board members. And so there are several ways to take a look at these types of programs and I'll provide um, example of how a couple of jurisdictions do that. But that's something that we're taking a look at as well. Um, another element is what advisory boards does this apply to? So as I've just mentioned, we've got a variety of advisory boards and um, they work in a variety of capacities and meeting times, et cetera, for the city of Lacey. So looking at um, what other jurisdictions have done, this really varies across the board. Some uh, jurisdictions provide every single advisory board member a stipend. Um, others only provide them for certain permanent advisory boards and um, others provide them for just their city's advisory boards and not regional advisory boards. There are other elements of um, stipend programs that might not have been included in the elements that I just provided a very high level overview of. Um, but what I did wanna highlight at the very bottom, the last two bullet points, is that, you know, regardless of um, you know, kind of how they're structured, the city would need to uh, comply with all federal tax requirements with any sort of stipend program. And we'd also need to create some sort of accounting uh, system that would allow us to track, you know, how many people are attending meetings and um, at what frequency maybe the stipends are going out to advisory board members.
With the, the boards that you have listed here, those would be considered permanent, but maybe like the homeless council, that would maybe be considered like a temporary one? Is that how that would typically be, be distinguished?
Correct, yep. So a lot, the, the ad hoc meetings are considered temporary in nature. So a couple of examples that I've provided, um, and there are links if you're interested in learning more um, for each of these jurisdictions. But the city of Bend, Oregon provides stipends of forty dollars for every advisory body member, uh, you know, per meeting they attend up to five hundred dollars. Uh, the city of Durham, North Carolina provides stipends for members of advisory bodies at a flat rate of fifty dollars uh, per meeting uh, with attendance requirements, uh, they do not have that cap of four hundred dollars. Um, so, you know, uh, advisory board members, you know, have to take into consideration the, the VPA and correct.
Yep.
And then the city of Olympia provides stipends of twenty five dollars per meeting attended uh, with the option to waive. So you, as a advisory board member, can opt out of receiving a stipend if you do not want to receive a stipend. Um, and then participants who uh, self-certify as low income receive fifty dollars per a meeting attended. And again, they do not have a cap of five hundred dollars on uh, for their stipend. So at this point in time, and um, what I'm here to uh, for tonight is to really get some feedback from you all. Um, but what we're at for, for thoughts on recommendation would be depending on how our VPA research goes. And that's a kind of a really big caveat, is to um, provide a, a tiered stipend program similar to the city of Olympia uh, based on meetings attended and to evaluate meeting data over the next few years to determine possible programmatic changes. So really seeing, you know, what kind of impact these types of stipend programs have. And then also um, to a point that you all have highlighted, we'll have better data over a period of time for, you know, meeting times and um, just frequencies as well for each of the advisory board meetings. And so our recommendation would be to have uh, this program applied to non-regional advisory boards. Um, so I've highlighted all of, all of those, including the Planning Commission. Um, and also I wanna highlight, including the Lacey Youth Council as well as part of those advisory boards. So um, I'll take a pause there and see if there's any questions or feedback.
I think that when you're talking about equity and inclusion, um, having people having to self identify as low income and then having to justify- having to self identify as low income and then having to justify that they get more or less. I think it's going to create a lot of division and othering. I think that a single mom who has to, you know, maybe pay for things in childcare, might have a certain income compared to a seventeen year old on the youth committee. So what is their income? They have nothing except for their parents. There seems like there's so many different minutia that if there is an option to just say, well, you know, I'm so wealthy that I don't want this or say, I'm going to take this money, I can donate it, people can do that, but it doesn't seem like classifying people as low income or lower than other people, it seems like it's creating something that feels exclusive instead of inclusive. And I do think that, you know, seeing the type of people who are able to participate in city leadership that, you know, having a stipends is probably a nice thing. I don't think that's why a lot of people choose to serve their their community. But I think that, you know, having this gift is 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 a blessing that would help maybe other people who who can't afford that childcare or, you know, other things allow people to participate, so.
Commissioner, can I ask a follow up question? As far as the self certifying, what are your thoughts if that information was not known beyond the finance departments and the the actual advisory board member receiving the stipend?
I mean, I I guess i- in the end, it it doesn't matter, but again, it's it's having to say, oh, I need extra money, which I I just think feels icky in the end. It's a stipend should be a stipend for for civil service. It shouldn't be that one person gets more, one person gets less, or one person gets nothing. I I don't think that when you're hiring people and, I mean, what I was thinking was was a compensation for mileage. You don't say, well, the city manager gets so much money, so they get, you know, a twenty five cents a mile for mileage. But the office clerk gets, you know, ten dollars per mile for mileage. I mean, you don't. It it that's, I don't think compensating people for service or for money out of pocket is really based on on their wage.
It's a stipend. I would I would agree with you that if if it's going to be a nominal amount, what would be the difference of making somebody have to admit to needing more versus less? I I don't see distinguishing. Just if you're going to pick an amount, pick an amount and do that. And way, somebody can waive if they chose to, but.
If I could just piggyback on what Karen's saying. When I read this 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 afternoon for the first time, my initial thought when I read it was why do we need a stipend? I like doing this as volunteer work. I remember once at a kind of contentious public hearing being told that that some member of the public told us that they paid our salaries. And we all kind of smirked about that. But then I read further and, you know, my privilege showed a little bit when I never realized that there actually is a barrier to, you know, getting more people participating in this type of thing, which is, you know, I don't have young children. I never had to deal with, you know, finding childcare and and having to worry about how I was going to get to City Hall twice a month. But I agree with what Karen's saying. I think it really just having to identify as needing the higher stipend, that alone could be a barrier for some people. And I I think the stipend needs to be high enough to to cover that kind of thing. I mean, I, when I saw twenty five dollars, I thought, I don't have kids, but I'm pretty sure I'm it's not that easy to get someone to come watch your kids for, I don't know how long the meeting's gonna go, right? You know, twenty five dollars just doesn't seem like it, you know, it's going to do anything. But but I kind of did a one eighty in my head on this and now I feel very strongly that there should be a stipend for exactly the reasons that you're looking at it. But I I agree with Carrie and I do not at all like the self identifying as someone who needs a higher stipend. I think it should be whatever the, you know, whatever is justified and whatever, you know, this, I know there's a lot of give and take there, but whatever that number turns out to be, that should be the number for everybody. If if, you know, I suppose there could be a way for people to refuse it somehow, but I don't know. That's my opinion. I agree with Carrie at a hundred percent.
Has there been a survey done or is there any evidence or specific comments that have shown that there is a reluctance on the on the from some people that, oh, barrier that where they wouldn't wouldn't be able to participate due to economic reasons?
So, you know, it's it's a great question. We haven't, you know, gone out with a survey on it. Why are why are you not participating? But I think, you know, just what experiences from local governments have has been, has 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 shown that there could be potential barriers to representation on advisory bodies. And something we'd like to track moving forward, if this, you know, pro- program, you know, is to be implemented in the future, is what kind of impact does a program like this have into increasing representation and reducing barriers for individuals who might not have participated in advisory board?
Yeah, like like Eddie, my my initial reaction was, are we solving a problem that doesn't exist? But, you know, I can see there might be some people that would might be reluctant, but it'd be interesting to to find out if there is a a survey that could be taken or 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 some sort of question that could be raised to the community to to ask, what is keeping people from volunteering? Is there, is it just the time commitment? Is it a financial commitment? Is it and with it, what they might believe is a lack of expertise or knowledge? But my first reaction is, you know, can we afford it, you know, and is it something we want to spend spend on if we don't know that there's a real bona fide need?
We've interviewed for a lot of like planning commission members and I'm I'm assuming the other boards and commissions also interviewed. Was there any like anecdotal evidence of it being a barrier to entry? It just, you know, obviously we wouldn't have the data necessarily, but I'm wondering, you know, in what kind of candidates we attracted, how we attracted those candidates. I know we've had lots of openings, at least on the planning commission. Is this anything that has ever been brought up in any way that it could be shared with us, you know, even if it's anecdotal?
Well, commissioners, what I will say is, you know, as far as anecdotal, right, is, you know, who who has served on our advisory boards over time, right? So taking a look at that. But I think, you know, one of the questions, and this ties into directly what what you two are asking about is, well, who has served? And we don't really have, you know, good data on the demographics and backgrounds of who's made up our advisory boards over time. So I'll advance just for a second to the next slide, but I am definitely wanting to continue to hear the input here. But what I was going to say is part of this program would also be to do some demographic data collection on what our advisory bodies look like and are they representative of our community? Are there places that we might need to do a concerted effort for outreach for future advisory board members to get more participants so that we do have more representative bodies? You know, typically, right now, we have advisory positions that open and we will advertise for them on various locations like social media as well as our websites and we'll send it out, you know, potentially to groups that we know might be interested in, you know, the topic at which you would be serving for on an advisory board. So then also taking a look at what else, what other opportunities might there be in the community to continue our outreach for advisory board recruitments in the future? So I'll, I do want to go back to this other point, but before I do, I just want to, before I lose my place on the slide deck.
I wanted to ask, what's the funding source?
Yeah, that is a great question. So the Lacey City Council for for this year, as well as the past two years, has provided funding for equity efforts in the community. And so if this were to move forward, likely with a program this year, we'd be looking to use some of the funding from those initiatives and then looking to incorporate it into a future budget request for twenty twenty four and beyond.
So it would be a permanent thing. So it's not a grant thing going on?
So it would be a stipend program and regarding permanency, I think that's one of the things we'd like to collect a couple of years of data if we were to move forward with the program to see if there is actually an impact on, again, creating greater representation on advisory board members.
Because at the senior center this week, and they had a a form of asking questions about the first day and inclusion.
Was that from the city of Lacey?
Yep.
So that's the Commission on Equity, right there.
So I filled one out.
So the Commission on Equity did a presentation at the senior center on Thursday, so I look forward to getting the data back from you.
Very good.
Go ahead, Karen. I, well, I'm I'm sort of torn about this because I think in some ways, it's saying to the people who volunteer to be on a commission, your opinion is respected. And we are willing to support you in some small way to get to the meeting, to pay your childcare, to pay your gas, whatever it is. And and it seems to me that if you set it at such a level that and and you maintain the five hundred dollar requirement, that that, you know, some of these people are going to max out before the end of the year, which is what it is. I I agree about the low income thing. I think that that really is not. I mean, I understand where it's coming from, but I think it's not. I think it's divisive in a way, even though people would only have to deal with the finance department. You know, it's just like, it's like every place you've ever worked, you know, you don't discuss salaries, but everybody knows how much everybody makes. So it's, it gets around. So I I just don't know. I mean, I see I see the upside of it, but it but it's sort of, and and I agree with the whole issue of when we go out into the community and we have to be able to say to people, I'm a volunteer. I'm doing this for the city out of the goodness of my heart because I think it's important. Not, I'm getting fifty bucks a throw. I think that is some value to that with us facing the community.
I like the wave option also.
The wave option being the ability to opt out of receiving.
That's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you want to continue the discussion or do you want to finish?
Well, I'll finish the last, I have one slide left and then I can close the slide deck here. But I think, you know, just another consideration is that if we were to move forward with a stipend program, we'd also have to take a look at updating parts of the Lacey Municipal Code. And so I've highlighted just a couple of examples for the City Planning Commission. And you can see that the LMC currently reads that members shall be selected without respect to a political affiliation and they shall serve without compensation. So that would also be part of this process is going back and evaluating updates to the Lacey Municipal Code. And just to touch on this point, which I already did, is that, you know, again, seeing what are the current state of our advisory boards and then what do programs potentially like this have an impact on if in the future? Or are there other things we need to take a look at? Or maybe things we didn't consider or think about as part of increasing representation and reducing barriers to government and participating in government. So with that, that is all of my slides now and I'm happy to continue the conversation.
I did have, I don't know, I think Jazzcom meets during the nine to five, during the week hours. And I know that wasn't part of our city advisory boards, but do any of our city advisory boards meet during the typical workday of nine to five throughout the week or do all of us meet in the evenings?
There are a few advisory bodies that do meet during the nine to five time period. Commission, the, excuse me, Jazzcom is actually not one of them. Joint Animal Services Commission meets on the first Monday of a month at five thirty.
Oh, I thought they met during the day.
But the two that I can think of right off the bat are Civil Service and then the left one board meet during the day.
If this was to be approved, this money could have been allocated maybe to something different. So while it is budgeted and there is an opportunity to pay for it, but what maybe are is the Commission on Equities leaving on the table that doesn't get implemented to fund this for whatever I think was fifteen to fifty thousand dollars? I I would, I would wonder if there was something that could be more impactful to the community to have more equitable representation than paying people that have already agreed to volunteer and and so I, what would be left on the table?
So Commissioner, the other project that we're going to expend funds on, and it's later in the year, is going to be work to start a equity map. And so this would be a map that collects data from a wide variety of sources and provides us as staff, as well as community members and other organizations, a tool to making better decisions on policy or program initiatives. And so we anticipate that currently there is enough funding to have both items moving forward in twenty twenty three. And then we would, if this becomes a permanent thing, we'd be requesting more funding in twenty twenty four.
How long has Olympia been doing this?
Olympia has had their stipend program, I think, in operation for just a little under a year at this point.
So they don't have much experience with whether it's influenced the membership of their commission.
Yeah, so Commissioner, I did reach out to Olympia representatives just to ask them a little bit about their experience and if they had seen any impact and changes over time. But again, like you said, it's such a small window that at this point in time, no.
I'd like to share a couple of comments. I know you're just kind of collecting all sorts of feedback. The first thing that occurs to me is this is a new program that's going to require some infrastructure, a creation of some new infrastructure within the the government. So that would be a concern for me is cost that goes with implementing the program. The other speaks to engaging the public in a certain way. To me, being on a board is kind of the pinnacle of the volunteer experience. But there's a lot of other entry points leading up to being on a board. There are a lot of opportunities where someone could attend regular city council meetings. There's always that open forum. There is a very, I think, well developed interface on the city of Lacey website that you can communicate with the with the staff. You can do the We Care forms, you can do requests for education. There's just a lot going on, a lot of other ways for people to engage. And yes, you know, applying to be on a board is is also great. There's also multiple ways for people to volunteer, not to volunteer, but to engage with meetings. We didn't always have the Zoom before, so that reduces a barrier of engagement. So you could be on a board and not have to be in the room, right? That's new. I also think that the idea of volunteering, and someone mentioned it before, there's something to be said for doing this without any compensation. And I volunteered in a number of different ways in this community and where I used to live. And I just think there's something very positive about just being a pure volunteer and not having kind of that effect of of compensa- literal compensation. I think there's a a different reward for engaging with the benefit of the community in that way. Whether it's an HOA or just showing up on MLK Day and wanting to do something because that's your day, that you can be flexible. Or, you know, on Patriot Day, you can do that one day because your company recognizes it too. But I'm not sure I I would think there's a place for this for the all those reasons. I'm not sure. And I and I listen to what you say about is privilege. You know, am I blinded by privilege in some way? I'm trying to check that because I read the materials before the meeting. I'm trying to check, is is that my resistance? And I don't think it is. I think there's just a lot of ways for people to engage with technology, with the great interface the city has developed. And then just kind of keeping the purity of being a volunteer without any compensation or strings or remediation associated with that. I'd like to kind of keep it that way, so.
If I could comment, and I do think it comes from a place of of privilege. And being a woman of color, I'll have to say that a lot of people are like, we need diversity on our board, come volunteer. And a lot of people, it depends, it doesn't matter about how much you volunteer and what place of your heart. I think a lot of people who fill the leadership roles are being called for it. I personally am grateful to do this from the bottom of my heart, but I'm, and it fills me with joy. Giving back gives me a sense of purpose. And being able to have a seat at the table, I think, is really important for our community. However, I know that for some people who might not have However, I know that for some people who might not have the same income opportunities that I have or that maybe other people in this room have, $500 can make a massive difference in their life. And maybe something that they could provide for their children or an experience they might not have otherwise. And so I think that saying that volunteering comes from strictly that intrinsic motivation is, is from a place of privilege when a lot of people who have a really powerful voice don't have that opportunity unless they have that equity piece of being able to provide the childcare or provide the food for their children while they're running out and not able to make dinner or, or transportation to drive across town when they might not have it. And I think being in person, having been a virtual teacher for five years and thank God I'm back in the classroom because it makes a difference. And so just being that virtual person in the background, you don't have the same access to people's body language and interactions. So I think, I think it does make a difference.
And just to piggyback again, Kirian, on what, on what you're saying, I, I think, I agree 100% with you. It's great that we have so many different ways for the community to participate in our processes now through the Zoom, which we never had before, the virtual open house. I love all those things. But sitting in the room with the same board every two weeks, where you get to know people, you get to feel comfortable giving your honest opinion and it's respected, I think is a lot different than, you know, sitting on a Zoom meeting or sitting in a, in an audience chair in a city hall meeting where you, you feel kind of overwhelmed by everything that's going on around you. Here, your voice is an equal with everybody and you, people eventually do feel comfortable to say how they feel and it, and it's meaningful. So I do think, if you look around this room, I don't know everyone's personal situation, but there are not a lot of us in this room that it, it doesn't feel to me struggle to make this meeting. Where, you know, 50 to $100 a month might make it possible to be a part of, you know, more of your citizens that you, that you can engage with, no matter where you are in your course of life. So I, I do think it's a barrier and obviously, as Mark said, we don't have any hard evidence that it's a barrier. But it feels like a barrier to me, as I keep saying, just because there are, you know, I think one person in this room that has young children at home. I could be wrong. There might be, there might be others, but I think there's just one. And a board with nine people on it, I feel like maybe, you know, we could do, we could do better along those lines. And the other thing, just to kind of pivot off this a little bit, I was thinking more about the graduated stipend. And one possible solution I thought to that was what if you don't attach any reason to it? What if, you know, a new person gets appointed to the, to the board and they, you know, they're told, okay, first thing you have to do is go see, you know, finance to fill out your W4 or whatever. And there's a checkbox. It says, how much compensation would you like? $0, $25, $50? Check one. And just let people do that without having to certify that they're low income or waive their fee or whatever. Just, these are your three options. Just pick one. I don't know.
I hadn't thought about the, you know, waiving the stipend, which in a lot of ways makes sense, but it, it could become kind of a stigma that's attached to it. If we're in a public meeting and someone go, hey, you guys are being paid for the meeting. And someone says, well, I've waived out of it and somebody else, you know, it doesn't or whatever. And it, it might actually strike some people in the meeting.
What if the stipend were to cover? I, I mean, the stipend is, I, I would, you know, decline the segment, but somebody, it may be that somebody says, that makes the difference in my coming to the meeting or not coming to the meeting. So you're still a volunteer. You're just, you know, being helped in a way. I mean, nobody else knows. And I, I do agree. I think there are people that, you know, 500 bucks wouldn't make, or whatever it is, would make a huge difference in whether they could be here or not be here.
So Commissioners need to be sensitive to that. Sorry, I apologize. I didn't mean to cut, I didn't mean to cut you out there. Commissioners, I just want to talk on a couple of things that I've heard. So circling back, Commissioner Doyle, to your comment about infrastructure, that is certainly something you're going to be aware of as we're taking a look at a potential program that we set up and really trying to streamline it to the best degree possible between, you know, our finance directors and then also our liaisons for our various advisory boards. Your point is, is well taken though. It does take infrastructure, right? You do have to create systems and you have to monitor the systems. And it's also kind of about auditing and checking that all as well. So I do want to just recognize that that is a good comment and something that we are taking a look at of how we could best implement this from a staff perspective, so that it is not an incredible amount of work to implement the program like this. Second question is, I sat here, Commissioner, and is it Miniger? As I said, you're thinking about the surveys and I just want to circle back to this, this question of no, you know, we don't have any survey data information on, you know, what has prohibited somebody from potentially being on an advisory board. But I was thinking about all of the rest of the survey data that we have taken more recently for some of the initiatives and programs that we have. So I'll say, you know, the Parks Comprehensive Plan Survey that went out, as well as the Lacey Cares Survey that went out the, in 2021. And in all of those surveys, we do see that the community is not represented based on, you know, who makes up the community currently. And so you do see even in those types of surveys that it is not representative of, of the community. So that is one data set. To your point though, we don't have something necessarily on advisory boards, but what we do see is an underrepresentation of, of voices in the community.
Yeah, I agree. I, I hear you. I also look at it from the perspective of, you know, a budget. And when you're looking at spending money in a city, there are things that are really important or really needed and things that are, you'd like to be able to do. And maybe we're at a point financially, we, we can go after the things we want to do rather than just the things that we need to do.
Pretty quiet. You made a couple of comments. One is, I really like the fact that I'm not compensated. I'm, it muddies the waters to me. Okay, that's just, that's me personally. I'm not speaking for anybody but me. But I've been at public hearings. Sometimes they're contentious. And I've had more than one, two, three people come up to me after one of those, and that's a citizen telling me that I've lost their vote, that I hope I get paid well for this job, you know? And, and there's only one reason I do this is to give back to the city that I live in. And so I like, I'm disappointed and, and I've been involved in interviewing for a couple of years. And to your, to your question, nobody's ever come in for an interview that has ever asked a question about, you know, do we get paid mileage? Do we get, nor, nor have we offered it. I definitely think that we don't, you're all wonderful. You're all wonderful. I want to tell you that. But we, as a group, I hope when I leave, that you find somebody that represents more of what our community looks like. It's been hard, very hard to reach that. And if perchance, and I can see where if you had a young family and you needed to pay for a couple of hours of, of sitting or, or you didn't have two gallons of gas in your car, you know? I've had those things happen in my life, never any children, but I've struggled at times when I was younger. If that means giving somebody $50 a meeting, you know, that might be a really good way to open a door that's, that's maybe not open. Because I would imagine, like, $50 isn't going to make, it's just a pain in the butt for me to do it on my taxes. To be honest with you. And so I don't care about it. But, and it's not why I'm here. But I think anything we can do, I really like Eddie's zero, 25, 50 or whatever, however he worded that, where you just pick. And then because I can only imagine that maybe even making that picking decision is tough for people that don't have what I have. I, I don't know because I'm not in that position, but I could imagine that. But I also wouldn't want to not consider that if it opens a door to representing more of our community better on this commission or any of our groups, that would be a positive thing for our community. So, and I'm really glad that I, as a planning commission person, don't have to make a decision on the stipend. Because, because it is fraught with lots of weird, weird dynamics that, that could blow up on you.
But I think, you know, I was just thinking about that $500 ceiling and that is there for a reason. Because it's there because it protects your personal liability. If we take an action and somebody comes after you, Dave, I'll give them your name. And, but it also says, you're still a volunteer. You know, you are not an employee. You are not, all those things. You are still a volunteer because you're still protected by the city for the actions that you take as a member of the commission. So you're still a volunteer. And I think Eddie's solution is really good, you know? Check a box. And, 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 and you know, people would know, right? That they, they were eligible for a stipend. I think, I think maybe, maybe it does open a door. And maybe it opens a door that we don't even know is there.
My feeling is, first of all, I appreciate the fact that we've got people in our city management that are thinking about our community in such a way. Because yeah, there's a lot of people that are struggling and we see it all around us. We can become very insulated from it. But the fact that it's even a discussion, I think, says something about our city that we're willing to be open-minded enough to consider it.
Well, Commissioners, I really appreciate all of the feedback that you have provided on this potential program. And this is certainly something that we are going to continue to take a look at and, you know, meet with other advisory boards before we make a final recommendation to the Lacey City Council on this program. So thank you for what you've provided. The other thing I just wanted to highlight is, you know, this is a, one program, you know, that the city is looking into to increase representation. There are other activities as part of the Commission on Equity, as well as the, you know, we're working on a draft diversity, equity and inclusion strategic plan right now. And it discusses a lot of other ways that we might be able to take a look at, you know, for example, the workforce and work environment, but also community engagement and again, representation. So this is just one of those elements and I'm sure I will be back in front of you all at a, at a later date for other initiatives. But thank you again for all the feedback you provided tonight.
Thank you.
And if you adjourn the meeting right now.
We always have Ryan.
Mine doesn't take too long.
Well, you're in a big one.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We are going to move on to capital, capital facilities plan. Update, interim update.
So in front of you tonight is basically a, a very slight amendment to our existing capital facilities plan to add the construction of the new Lacey Police Facility. So this, no actions required, just a briefing. And I'm just going to briefly go through what's kind of in the, in the staff report for you. The capital facilities plans, we have various, you know, elements of our comprehensive plan. The capital facilities plan is a required element. And we do, usually we, we strive to update that plan often. The last time that we did update that plan was it back in 2019. And the, basically, you know, what's in the capital facilities plan is, is kind of the, the gamut of all the different facilities that the city owns, whether that's above ground or below ground. So showing, you know, existing, it's a plan that shows our existing facilities, their capacities, making sure that we forecast the future needs. So as our city grows, so does the facilities, locations, where they're at, those kinds of things. And then a six-year plan on how to fund those. And that's actually kind of the crucial part of this tonight is that this will actually kind of set forth the, the funding parameters, if you will, for, for how the police station may be potentially funded. So we're, we're currently underway on updating a, a full rewrite of our capital facilities plan, which will be done by the end of this year. So this will be something that the planning commission will be, be seeing. Right now, we, we don't even have an early draft. And so we, we're not able to put in the, the construction for the new police department into that, that plan quite yet. So what, what we need to do is take our 2019 plan and add the construction of the, the, the police facility to that. The reason that we need to include the police department construction in this is that in order to use a couple pots of funding, primarily real estate, real estate excise tax REs, and also using capital bonds, we need to include that in our capital facilities plan. So if we move forward with construction of the police facility tomorrow, for example, it's not in our capital facilities plan. It doesn't show that we're going to build a new facility. All it shows is that we're going to do preliminary design. And that's really what our, our CFP shows right now. So, yeah, so that's really the purpose of it is to put it on the CFP to do a slight amendment to essentially one page. I'll kind of go through that page here in a second. But I'm, I'm not, and I'm not going to really go into too much detail on exactly the, how the, the new facility will be constructed. Or right now, it's, it's still in like the 60% design phase. So there are still a lot of moving targets as far as the, the actual design of the police station goes. But it is the appropriate time to get this on the capital facilities plan.
Brian?
Yep.
The police station is going to get placed into capital facilities plan. The police station that we have right now, is that also the renovation of that into something else going to be part of this?
Yeah. So that's an interesting question. And part of the work that we're doing with our updated capital facilities plan. So we are not only showing the, the future construction of the new facility, but we've also done an analysis of what the old station should become. And so the current police station was built in 1985. It's mostly concrete masonry block construction. And so it's not easily configurable into other spaces. It also has a fire protection system that is maybe not even operational at this point. So if the building was to catch on fire, there's some question as far as whether or not, it's a, it's a dry sprinkler system. And so it's not, we're not really sure what the reliability of that sprinkler system is right now. And so we've done the analysis and right now the, it looks like in the upcoming, so this is the, the new 2.0 version of our capital facilities plan, is that it'll recommend, it'll recommend either mothballing the police station or demolishing it. So unfortunately, we're not able to use it for, for anything other than a, a police station for the purpose that it was built. So it has some office spaces, but the office spaces are, are utilized by upper management in the police department and are, are awkwardly configured. It doesn't have a very good customer service arrangement at the front counter. And then, you know, I think about like, it's got locker rooms and report writing rooms, break rooms and those kinds of things. A sally port in the back, you know, you just go on the laundry list of. A Sally port in the back, you know, you just go on the laundry list of different things that are, are really just established for just operational police department. So there's very little, very little that the city can use it otherwise. So for those that don't know, the, the new facility will be located essentially right across Third Avenue, right across the other side of Third Avenue. There's a new sign kind of right by the entrance there on College Street, so immediately north of City Hall. I did want to go into just brief details. You've got the sheet in your, in your packet. And really, this is what is, is the proposed amendment, which is, as I mentioned, right now, this sheet is shown in our current capital facilities plan as being doing, going through the preliminary design phase of the police facility. So we were anticipating that this will go through the full build out of the project. So you can see that we're, we're into twenty twenty three right now. Mostly design and engineering costs with breaking ground in twenty twenty four and then completion in twenty twenty five for a project total amount. And this is, this is an, an estimate. It could be higher, it could be lower. Fifty three million dollars for the new facility. If you look at the funding amounts, some of it is non-voted general obligation bonds, which is that councilmatic bonds, there's some general fund revenue. There's the real estate state excise tax portion of this will come from. And then as well, there are the ARPA, ARPA, the American, is it the American Rescue Act? What's that?
Rescue Plan.
Plan, okay. I should know that. I'm a planner.
American Rescue Plan.
Yeah. Is, so ARPA funds, is that about three point three million dollars for that as well? So with that, again, it's just a real minor amendment, but a crucial one to add this to our existing capital facilities plan. Be happy to answer any other questions you might have. Otherwise, this will come forward to you for a, a planning commission or a public hearing at Plank Commission. I wouldn't estimate that we would have too much public, you know, that would be too interested in this. It's more of a procedural thing than, than, than not. So we'll have to schedule it for a future public hearing and then Plank Commission will make a recommendation on this to council.
Remind me, how, how is this being paid for? Is there a bond for this?
Yeah. So if you go back to that last sheet, it summarizes how, all the different funding. So it's a, a non-voted bonds, it's a, a real estate, real estate excise tax, and then some money that's coming from the federal government as well. That's the ARPA dollars.
Fifty three million, you know, just, I don't know how to build, you know, commercial kind of construction. Would that come as a sticker shock to consumers and, and affect maybe some reactions at a public hearing?
It could. You know, I, I think it initially started as like a forty million dollar project. But what we're hearing right now is, you know, with the cost of construction, it, it's, it has more to do with the cost of construction going up than anything with that, that dollar amount increasing. Especially given that, you know, you, you want to make sure that you allow for enough contingency. So if those estimates come in that you can so do the project. My feeling is, I think, in talking to our finance director who put this information together, is that if the budget did get any higher than fifty three million dollars, we would generally, we probably have to go out to the voters to actually do a, a voted bond in, in that case, to raise the funds to be able to do it. And then there would be procedures associated with that. So my, my feeling is this is about the highest we can do without having to go directly to the voters' desk to increase taxes.
So that would be sort of a completion bond rather than a off the cuff.
Right.
Raw land bond.
Right.
Is the, sorry, is the, the five million dollars in general revenue in twenty twenty three, I assume that was budgeted for?
Correct. Yep. So those are general fund revenues. We, we have basically kind of earmarked within our general fund, specific projects where, where that money can go to. So that's, I'm not exactly sure the exact source of that, but it, it would be, you know, basically in the city's bank account dedicated towards use for the police department.
How, how long should the, the size, scale, type of building that's being proposed extend for the police department? So what is, what are they seeing? How, how long they'll be able to use this?
I think it's twenty years. I think it's, it's a twenty, it's either twenty or if it's fifty. I'm not exactly sure. I, I can find that out for you. But I know that when they, because they, they reached out to me directly to get some population estimates, is that they're really, you know, fo- focusing on having this be a facility that's going to last through, you know, a, a large population increase in Lacey's population. And they're also sizing it for some potential eventual annexations as well. So as we bring on more of the urban growth area into the city, that, you know, the police station will be sized enough to be able to handle some of that growth. So I, I'm, I'm thinking it's probably more of fifty years now than I said.
I think twenty would be
Yeah.
Too small or too short term.
I think it's, I, I think when the initial group got together, it was fifteen years because I was on that advisory.
I can find that out for sure, but I'm kind of.
So they're not going to fill it up the minute it opens and then.
Just gonna say that, that.
And then they'll make a way back over here.
I've seen presentations show how much they've outgrown this current space and so unmanageable from what I've seen.
Well, and there's that, that's the old thing about the, you know, fire system, fire system not working.
Yeah. Yep. It's, it's an interesting space. I had the opportunity to walk through it, I don't know, nine months ago. I hadn't been over there in a long time. And, you know, just the funky little jail cells and.
Do you pick a new office?
Yeah, exactly. It's definitely, it's shown its age, no doubt about it. So.
This doesn't include doing anything with the existing.
That's correct. Right. And at this point, you know, it would either be mothballed or demolished. So.
How would that affect City Hall and the library? Aren't they connected?
No, they're not connected. So City Hall ends, so essentially what City Hall, the oldest part of the, the City Hall's always been added on as, as it goes. So that is the oldest end of the building. They're not physically connected to the library. The police station is the dead end part of this building. So it's the oldest part of this building. And then you get in front of our parks and rec, like where the community room, that's kind of the second oldest. And then I'll, here you get to the, the third oldest and that, then the newest wing is this west wing of the building.
So we don't need to do anything with this?
Not tonight. It's just for your information. I will bring this forward for public hearing at a future meeting.
Any other questions on that? Okay, whole business we have none. Any communications and announcements, Ryan? Anything grand additional?
Can I ask one question?
You absolutely can.
And if this was covered at a meeting that I missed, I started thinking about this whole twenty twenty five conference. Would it be, is it, or is it in, in the plans for you to maybe give us a refresher on what is the comprehensive plan and how does it relate to? How is it used and all of that? Because I know there are some newer members here that might not, I mean, I don't even know that I fully understand it because I haven't been here long to go through a full update like we're preparing to do.
Yeah. And one of the things we've talked about is with the kind of initial stages of the outreach is to do, is especially given that we've had some very controversial projects lately that is to maybe do some kind of almost like civics one-on-one type engagement with the community. So, you know, as we get closer to rolling that out, I think we could definitely do a test run with the planning commission to, to see, you know, what, what else we might be able to do, because I think you guys would be really interested in it. So not only from kind of like, you know, the current planning side, the permitting side, but the, the comprehensive planning and the, the, you know, big comprehensive plan update process and, you know, the visioning the city does and those kinds of things to bring you guys into that, as well as the, prior to the rest, going out to the rest of the community. So.
We're, that would be, the, the, the reason I brought it up is because I actually, I have a friend that was the whole Pink Slate thing. And so she knows I'm on the plane. She was telling, you know, we went to City Hall, we did all this stuff. And I thought I should engage her on the comprehensive plan stuff, but then I was like, I don't know if I know how to talk about it.
Yeah. So we, we've definitely been, that's something we're thinking about. And so, you know, stay tuned. I think that's something we'll definitely, you know, test out with the planning commission is, once we get to that point, as far as, you know, what this could look like. We've talked about like a citizens academy kind of thing, a Lacey, Lacey Academy where people can come learn more about the city and, you know, how to get involved and those kinds of things. So, so stay tuned. And, and I know there's a lot of interest there. So we'll definitely bring it through the planning commission as we develop it.
That type of thing would be, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, that planning class that you sent out, is that going to cover some of the comp plan stuff?
It will at a really broad level. So that, that's the planning short course that is done by the Washington APA and Planning Association of Washington. They, they put together, it's kind of like a state planning framework, you know, three hour course on how things kind of work. But really, when it comes down to it, I think, I think maybe what you're asking about is something a little bit more specific about Lacey. Right? Like, so how does the comprehensive plan, you know, get into our development regulations and how do those development regulations impact, you know, how things are built on the ground and those kinds of things? I think it's kind of a little bit more tangible and things that people are a little bit more engaged with, especially coming out of these controversial projects.
As part of that, you might tie it all together by like, pointing out what advisory boards exist and what they do. And, you know, if there's a stipend program. I mean, that, that might get people more engaged if they come through and see all the things that, you know, you know, that they could volunteer to do and, oh, they, they will pay for my gas.
Yeah. That was a great conversation, by the way. Great to have the Plank Commission here.
She's lived, like, very good skills.
She's, she's, yeah.
All righty. Anything else?
Yes.
I'm going to be in Mexico in March, so I will be.
I planned my Mexico trip between the, I'm going next week.
Then we'll just split your fifty dollars. Old lady getting married.
Thank you very much. Didn't think that'd ever happen.
Well, you can come if you want. I think another table or two.
Congratulations, Frank.
Thank you very much.
Uh, and March seven. I'll be tan at that point.
All righty, we are adjourned.
We're over one point two hours.
As soon as that video gets turned off.
Have a good evening, everybody.